So to all call the meeting to order. Frank Proctor, can you confirm that a forum, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now, you have an agenda before you, council, that was previously distributed. You maintain a motion, you're on the floor.
Remove the agenda being adopted as distributed.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Oh, sir. Thank you, council. Planning commission review. Good evening.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council. So we have three planning and zoning applications coming before you on the seventh. The first two applications are related requests for an annexation and a rezoning for approximately one and a half acres located south of the southeast corner of Highway 515 and Maleska Highway 108. As you may recall, Clipper Petroleum is proposing to develop the heart corner with a new gas station, convenience store, and truck stop. And as part of their development, Clipper is currently under contract to purchase the annexation area for a portion of their truck parking. So the annexation area previously accommodated a portion of the former Dunn's parking area, but it was never actually located within the city. They just used it via a parking easement. And so now that Clipper is redeveloping the site so that they can do so cohesively under consistent regulations, they're requesting to annex the property and rezone it from the Piggins County Highway Business District to the City of Jasper equivalent General Commercial District. So staff recommends approval of the respective applications, subject to conditions. And then Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval per staff's recommendation at their meeting on Tuesday. And then the third and final application that we'll have before you is a sign variance application by Chick-fil-A for their new restaurant center at the Gateway Crossing Shopping Center. Chick-fil-A is requesting a variance to increase the number of allowed building facades with signage from two to four. Because their proposal does not satisfy the sign ordinance criteria or hardship criteria for variance relief, staff did recommend denial. However, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval with the condition that the overall sign area shall continue to comply with our 200 square foot area limitation. So that's around, I conclude our applications.
Anything?
No.
Anything from City Manager's office on this office?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item, LMA, Mr. Douglas.
Sir, so just real quick, Mr. Mayor, council. You may recall that each year we get an allotment from the Georgia Department of Transportation for road improvements, LRA. I think last year we could book those practices, the first year could be year before, but there's additional monies that the state has identified, they call them LRAs. It's essentially, they fund it through their LDA grant program, but there is no associated match with it. You may be aware that we are doing some work in the Elizabeth Street area for some roadway culvert repairs utilizing 2014 monies. Those should be exhausted by the end of 2025. But there's been a continual need to look at the Steedall Drive road culvert where there's a sinkhole. And so what we were desirous of doing is taking the LRA monies, because we had not anticipated receiving any of those extra monies, it's about $98,000, to then look at that project to try to bring into repair and spin out. We've not received any quotes, we've not received any ideas. Just to kind of give you an idea about the Elizabeth Street, we did solicit for three written quotes, and all of them, I say all of them, the two of the three that we received, we did get a no bid due to schedule constraints. One was for $27,800, and the other one was $29,925. So obviously we moved forward with the lower. So that gives you perspective that this does fall within less than the $50,000. So we feel very comfortable, we're not going to exceed that $98,000. The hope is for it to even be comparable to this of less than $30,000. So at that point, it would afford us the chance to then have extra money from that $98,000 that we could then look at what we could do with, because we do have a lot of needs with road and culvert repairs. So that was, that in a nutshell, any questions about that?
Counsel?
It is not one of those necessary action items that you have to do. This is just more of a let you know that we were fortunate to be told it's $98,000, but you still have to actually go through the online portal process of retrieving that money. So just want to keep you all right to that.
Mr. Douglas, do you want us on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled meeting for action?
I don't think we need to, unless you did otherwise, sir.
Okay.
That because of the term of the limit.
Wonderful.
Where is the original source of those funds? I know we get them, that comes through the state, but is it, where does that come from? Do you know?
I could speculate from trying to recall from memory, but I'd probably be wrong.
Okay.
Because most of the time, any state transportation monies is tied to kind of gasoline tax and/or the federal allotments, federal highway.
On the direction of the LRA funds, do you want that continued for the next agenda?
More just information.
Okay. Wonderful. Right, next item, janitorial services?
Yes, sir. So in the 2025 budget, we did continue to budget for cleaning services. You may recall that earlier this year, we terminated a contract with a cleaning company. We have been since then, and pretty much since last August, doing everything in-house, meaning even the mayor and I sometimes take out the garbage and buff the floors and vacuum. And that's certainly continued to do, but because we do have some monies budgeted, I did want to bring before y'all that we feel as though the staff level that we would need to create a part-time position, that is a position that is not currently budgeted. So although we do have cleaning services as a budgeted item in certain department budgets, we had not anticipated on creating a part-time position. We feel as though that a part-time position for cleaning services of 20 hours a week would have less of an impact on the budget, because even if you did $20 an hour at 20 hours a week over a 52-week period, it is far less than what we were doing with a contractor. So wanted to kind of gauge the opinion of council. Ultimately, these RCD facilities that you all are in charge of, you may or may not have noticed that it's not always, you know, stellar, just because it's competing with other job duties we have. So we can try to give it a go and present you all at the April 7th meeting with a job description for a part-time. There is no guarantee, you'll hear from the Administration Committee here momentarily, that we have 11 open positions, meaning they were already budgeted for, already funded, they're just open, unsealed. That's nothing more than just information. So we would be creating a new position, and the monies budgeted would just go towards that position. So it's not a hit to the budget. I will say, based upon what is budgeted, if we were to take this out for proposals, and we may still have to do that, because if the will of the council say, hey, just go out for a cleaning service, accompany, don't worry about the part-time, we do not know what that cost would be. So we may then have to amend the 25 budget to accommodate that. Based upon our analysis of what we have budgeted, and based upon $20 an hour, 20 hours a week for 32 weeks, because we started in May, we will have sufficient monies in the 25 budget to accommodate that. So any preference on the part-time position creation, or just say, hey, stick it out for RFP for cleaning services?
What's the cheapest way we can get our billing coined?
Based on our fault, a part-time.
And before, was that a part-time position we had before, or was that full-time?
It was a full-time.
Full-time.
And remember, and this is universal, if you hire someone full-time, you essentially are doubling that because of benefits. Part-time falls under the requirements, so there's no benefits. So 20 an hour, 20 hours a week, 52 weeks a year is $20,000 and some change, I think $20,800.
Mr. Douglas, do you feel comfortable that a job description could be provided by the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel comfortable that an RFP draft could be provided by the next meeting?
Most likely, yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, if you're all right with it, what I'd like to ask staff to do is to provide both of those to us, and present the information, and allow counsel to provide direction on either a part-time or an RFP process. If we can have both presented to us. Discussion?
I think it's a great idea. Right now.
I know we have two council members at tonight, and that's why I want to make sure that we're.
Right now, I think we're toward one way, but.
So the RFP would be, there'd be enough information on that where we could individually compare, even though it's not apples of apples, we would be able to look at it from the perspective of.
I believe so. I believe the job description and equipment, if I'm wrong, I believe the job description and the RFP would both reflect what the duties would be, what the need would be.
And the salary range.
And then it would ultimately be up to this electability on which route do you prefer to take. And it may be, at the direction of council, that we start in one direction, and within 30 days, if no actions taken or nothing's received, then switch and allow staff that direction to just go ahead and flip over after a certain period of time. That comfortable with both of you?
I will. You want that in a motion?
No. I'm willing to advance it to the next meeting, and it will not be on consent, we'll just be presenting more information.
There's nobody internally that possibly could fit the bill, either by a part-time person, we could increase their hours, and then they could do it, or, I mean, I'm.
We don't currently have any budgeted part-time.
Okay. And a full-time person? We couldn't work a full-time person in a part-time at the end of. Right, if that was your suggestion, no.
And again, in just an RFP draft, I'm not looking for anything absolutely final. Counsel can just give direction on which they prefer. Go from there. Counsel, I'll.
Did I have anyone weigh in on that, the committee?
I do not think, we, I know for a fact, last Wednesday, we did not talk about it.
Okay.
We've talked about it probably since last July.
Okay.
If you recall, we had some challenges, and we began doing our own in-house. It's not been this formalized at this point.
Any other further comments?
No.
Next item, Administration Finance Committee, next. Mr. Douglas, I'm going to include you in all these, if you have anything to add, still for after committee.
Or during. Audit has, is continuing, is winding up, I guess it's fair enough to say. We do have a recommendation for amendments that we'll be discussing. There will be a request from auditors or advice from them that we, again, do a single audit for '22, '23, and '24 because of our federal monies that we're bringing in. Those will be $8,000 for two years, and I guess it's $8,000 for three years.
The single one that you're talking about, sir, it's initiated due to the federal funding?
Due, yeah.
So as far as.
That would be the super plant and the firefighters, federal resources.
And so part of the, so if you're wondering why '22, '23, '24, the auditors, when they were looking this year, because we had closed out the interim financing for the wastewater plant project, even though we're still ongoing, you had to exhaust all of your interim financing through the lender, and then now you're into the grant portion of the USDA. When they recognized the fact that even though we had been utilizing the interim financing through a lending institution, their contention was that it is ultimately federal monies, you know, loan, basically, and so when we closed on that, it triggered them to say that now, over those years, '22, '23, '24, you would recognize those monies as federal monies, so you need to go back and do a single audit. Just precautionary, it has no impact on any audit from '23, '24, '22, it's just a single audit for those federal monies.
And during the process, since then, we've been having frequent meetings with the people that were managing that money, right?
Yes, we have been.
And so was the $8,000 the cost, is owed?
That's my note was for the three years, $8,000 cost.
$8,000 each for the auditor. A single audit, most, my experience with single audits is, again, the idea of receiving federal monies, whether it's loans or grants. It, it ends up costing a nominal amount because you have to do a single audit, so one of those necessary evils.
Yeah.
The, there was a discussion about possibly having a amendment to the 25 budget discussed in the May-June time, May-June months timeframe, looking at workers' comp, liability insurance, franchise fees received and such, that would possibly enable extra funds to be used in training. But again, that's an amendment that could come to you in the May-June timeframe. First, our handbook's been discussed. Probably the biggest discussion is long lines of peak time off versus arrangement of sick leave and annual leave. I can't remember, we had a timeframe one day, and it's, I just had a discussion with Lori about it. I know David has had a look at it, and I think Ann is becoming more comfortable with it. I would think we could bring that to you pretty quickly. I don't see it at the next meeting.
And what we had talked about was, Mr. Looney and Ms. Navy, we had met last Wednesday to kind of walk through it again, to address some immediate concerns. And we feel as though that we've got a draft that has at least gone through staff, and it's gone through committee a couple of times, that we did want to email it out to y'all. So rather than just emailing y'all something blindly tomorrow or Monday, and you not having kind of the hearing about, we have been vetting this for a few months, and then that way, as you're kind of walking through the handbook, you can kind of say, hey, at least two of your cohorts and/or staff has at least walked through it enough that maybe we missed something, maybe we need to clarify something, it is good to get another set of eyes on it, and then, as Mr. Looney said, hopefully by the May meeting, we could approve it, predicate obviously on kind of running through the work session in April to kind of walk through any specifics.
Thought being, we can get your comments in a shorter period of time, and then take action after, after your comments are made.
Prior to the meeting?
Yes.
So some form of dialogue about what's going on, and if necessary, and.
I think if we put it out, and y'all read it, and have comments that can be answered, without a.
Decision.
Decision, that's fine. If somebody has a problem that we have to meet together as a group, we could certainly do that. That makes sense to you?
Absolutely, that's perfect sense.
All right. That's all I hear.
And so just to kind of expand a little bit on what Mr. Looney has stated, part of, you recall, we adopted the 25 budget, there was a trial on training in the legislative fund. I know that there is still a desire to look at how we can continue to expand and enhance our training, especially you all, you know, making the decisions. So there's already monies in there, just recognizing that we had said during the 25 budget process that we would evaluate the first quarter of '25, and say, hey, do we need to modify this? I will tell you that I have reached out to the Carl Vinson Institute of Government to specifically request a price for doing some planning and zoning training, PNZ 101. There's typically 18 slots available for an amount, and so with the planning and zoning members plus any council members plus associated staff, you could have a planning and zoning 101. I don't want to take anything away from Dr. Proctor, we had looked at DDA, similar type of situation, coming from some of their surplus funds, so it wouldn't be a hit to this general fund budget, but with PNZ not having an operating fund, it wouldn't need to be modified in legislative budget, department budget, to account for. I was going to get with finance next week and just kind of walk through some specifics of what it would look like, and then probably at the May meeting, if we have any budget amendments to consider, at that's the time that we will include that type of training and any additional monies we need to balance. That make sense?
It does, yes, sir. There's a certain amount budgeted for education for the legislative, do you know what that amount was off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I would say $2,500.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make some comments?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
So I think this is a great example of how we make strategic initiatives a part of our plan, and then moving forward, sometimes it takes a long time to accomplish those things. So I want y'all to all reflect on, before Mr. Douglas came here, as a group, we all made lists of things that we thought were pertinent, and again, not knowing anything about what it was going to be like to have a professional city manager. And one of the things, and then those items from each and every one of us were then organized because there were a lot of commonalities, and then we decided that we agreed with what we were going to present to Mr. Douglas when he got here with the infamous Brandon's list. And I want to commend council for those actions at that time, and also say that when Brandon got here, he immediately started knocking every single one of those things off, even the fact that we didn't have a legal PNZ committee, there were no ordinances that established that committee. We still attempted to move forward with one of the items on that list, which was an adequate educated group of organizations that were tied to this council, be that the DDA or the PNZ committee, or whatever you want, additional committee you want to put in there. And we embarked on that, actually. Unfortunately, COVID kind of swept it out from under us, and quite frankly, without none of our current members, I don't believe, were on the PNZ at that time, there was not a tremendous amount of interest. Having said that, we have two new members on our PNZ now, and they've had two meetings, I think, and there's, and he did a phenomenal job at giving them education. She did a phenomenal job of educating those people, I sat in on it, Mr. Hannah sat in on it, and then there's, since then, there's been interest about some of our things that are going on in our PNZ that have shown this is a new organization that is moving forward, and I'm really excited about it, so. So I'm glad to see that, again, this is, it's a, when we first started this, before we did anything, we were trying to explore how we could accomplish the things that we've accomplished coming from the culture that we were embedded in, to one of professionalism, and of course, we were consistently reaching out to GMA and Carl Vinson, and they helped facilitate, particularly early on, with our first recruitments, how we would search for people, how we would appropriately interview them, how we would appropriately advertise in our paper when we had candidates, and it was really a tremendously rewarding experience. So I'm hoping that if we are able to do these things, it will bring, bring that back, where there's, there's team building going on in these meetings, and I was excited, really and fairly sure, where when Brandon, it was just mentioned, really, and then you ran out of the quote, but it did, wait a minute now, this sounds familiar, so I had to go back to that, to that list, and I want to thank council for working on that list together and accomplishing an objective, maybe not what Brandon was expecting when he got here, but also want to thank Brandon for accomplishing that list and continuing to work on, so.
Thank you.
But it also highlights the fact that we started something a long time ago, and sometimes it takes a long time to get there. And you can't all of a sudden start saying, well, we started it a long time ago, but we're not going to do that anymore. You got to keep plowing through it, and with the vision that you have, despite some of the challenges that we face and have faced for a long time, I think this year may be the year where we start showing people that we are, we're delivering, we're delivering. And you can say we're not, you can do whatever you want to, but I'm proud to be a part of this organization for that very reason, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, any other comments on that? Before we do move on out of this committee, I do want to say that the two amendments are going to be forwarded to the next meeting. Is there any objection to them being a consent item?
No.
All right, I hear none, that'll be a consent item. No further info needed. Thank you, council. Property Properties Committee, next.
I had a nice visit with Ken and Brandon, and Brandon, Hannah, we toured the city, see the condition of the parks, we started off at the city park at Duck Mine. Josh and his crew's done an amazing amount of work, it looks wonderful down there.
Yes.
They've gone in and removed a lot of the rotten structures, got that out of the way, cleaned it up, they worked on the drainage coming off of the backside of the upper ball field, and did a good job about working on it, and maybe replaced culvert with two culvert, but it was a good, it was a temporary fix, but it's given an option for the eighth fix. So that was a good thing, they removed the old Spaw Kids playground, that's been removed, and looks clean over there, and we looked at that area and did some brainstorming, tried to figure out what we can do with that area over there. It will be improved, we just don't know what yet. A lot of trees removed, the culvert, the pond was repaired, just a lot of work there. And we went over to Peace Park, whereas you can go there, and it looks 100 times better than it did, you know, six, eight months ago.
Day and night difference.
Oh, day, day, definitely. And they have worked their toes off there, thinned out the trees, they working on fixing the brick. We got a partnership with Keep, Fix Beautiful, which we had, was meeting today. Brandon, can you fill me in on that? Brandon, can you fill me in on that?
Yes, so we ended up, because we had met previously and because I wanted to respect KTB's time, I went ahead and released them to go ahead and price some of the plantings from Home Depot. I did say that we didn't have a project budget, but we do have a line height and budget of materials and supplies. And when you start thinking about $1,200, $1,500 in that line item, I said, I don't have a budget, but to please go and price it and then kind of look at the amounts you think you need. And then we could go and purchase it through our city procurement at Home Depot for them to get started.
And there's still a lot of work over there. They've really, we got rid of a lot of the old lights fixtures, the old wiring that was there, cleaned it up. And we're looking into more lighting over there, more lighting over at City Park.
There's some light, there's some, there are some new lights at City Park over by the tennis courts. I think they're new.
But they still, they're still working there with that.
Okay.
And so.
Brandon and I drove by there today.
Still working on that. And then getting ready, we went over to Lee Newton Bar and looking forward to upgrading it and making a couple more electrical ballots. I guess we have the Marvel Fest on and Jeep Fest and all other, we can accommodate them better.
So that is underway because I learned that today. I mean, we talked about that for quite some time. I didn't realize that there had been some, they've been on the electrical improvements, you know, but.
Small scale, I believe.
Emily and I have been communicating quite frequently today. And she mentioned that, so that was good to know.
And I do know that, and pardon me for my boldness, but I think at times, even when it comes to these, these big plans or whatnot, you look at a 500, $600,000 need and you pare that down to a $300,000 need, your pedestals do this or that. And then you don't get past go because you're just faced with that, that hurt. So last year, they secured pricing to do what needs to be done to get it safe and functional for, I think, 30,000. So in light of the BRAG announcement and knowing that we're going to have close to 2,000, we went ahead and released and said, try to get this done before BRAG because if we're going to have people in the park needing to utilize the electricity. For the amount that we could do, we just decided to go ahead and get started. We know that you're going to need it for Jeep Fest, for Marvel Fest, for the snow then. But we wanted to go ahead and get it going on that. And because it was less than 50,000, we had just secured some numbers and released them to go.
And then we can build upon that as we go, as money comes available or, no, also with other partnerships with the community, you know. We, we definitely like to see the citizens partner with the city to make our parks better because it's for our citizens and I think citizens, some of the best volunteers are, you know, can't put a price on how valuable they are to the city and the parks. Just a lot of that. And then like I said, Forest Cleanup goes, our crews have done some good, I don't know if y'all noticed, but we've had some bad weather and a lot of flooding and stuff. The Parks guys, Josh and his new bunch is really big business. Kudos to everyone of them. And Jim, do you and Doc want to say anything about Pro Park? It's, that's kind of y'all's.
Will you, you can start off.
Well, got solid plans for the first time, so y'all go ahead.
How they look?
Well, I'd like to see more. I'd like to see more. So.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
I think concerning Pro Park, if the plans are out, I understand.
For council?
For council.
Hey, just that first page, I think, for the committee, Jim, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the plan to get full.
Yeah, apparently I had composed an email yesterday after we met with GMC to forward to full council, put all of council's email addresses, attached the documents, hit send with this great big narrative. And I was talking to Mr. Looney just before the meeting and said, yeah, I said, I went ahead and sent it out to council, you know, in anticipation of the night so they could look at it last night. We can't expound upon it. There's no action to be taken, just a while. And he looked at me weird and this is not unusual, but I went back and looked at my desktop and did not see the email sent. Then opened my phone and I commented to the mayor this morning that without saying anything about these devices, I know I hit send because I know how I, where I was at when I composed it and didn't go through. So I sent it probably about three minutes before I walked in here.
Okay. So, so I had a similar thing happen a week ago.
Is that because you saw John?
I saw the front page, just off the.
We, we had, we had printed out the front page when we got it last Wednesday and we had it on the conference room table and we kind of walked through it and said, you know, the 60% was just to kind of get some cost estimations. Because what you don't want to do is release an engineer predicated on taking the elements of, and, and quite candidly, you've got an existing park over there, passive green space. So the elements of parking, the overlook, bathrooms, entertainment area, stage, you don't want to not be able to complete it with the grant that's sponsored money. So the 60% drawings has the estimate associated. So then you can move forward to 90% to get closer to this.
When, when you said you saw him, John, I thought maybe you hadn't seen the email that I didn't mean to send this. So you will be getting 60%.
So then step it around.
Okay. You, you will be getting the 60% complete version of the plan. And what I'd ask you to do is, is look at it and give comments and concerns.
I, I don't think you have any problem with that.
So we came up in our DDA meeting about when is this going to be rolled out? And I, and I think I took a little bit of the lead on that just because it is, you know, our, Brandon's done a phenomenal job in keeping it moving. But, but, but the reality of it is, is it won't roll out until council sees it. And, and I also explained, and I'll explain, I'll explain it briefly again, a little bit of how the grant process works and who is able to participate in the, in these designs. And so basically, it's when the first grant application was, the meeting started, it had to either be elected or for employees of the city. That's how close closely tied it is when the federals are going to give you some money. And, and of course, it's taken a long time. These projects always take a long time. There were some hangups. We have a big project coming up. But it's been, it's been, it's been in all of our hearts or most of our hearts since really almost, I mean, our first meeting to Savannah was when we met out there in the, I can't remember that area, close to Savannah. We met with some engineers and we talked about it and presented it to Mayor Weaver. And, and that, that point in time, I had no vision or ability to understand how we would ever do it. I can tell you that the prices I heard then are double what we're going to be paying this first phase. I mean, you know, he had originally told me is what I, he told me. But again, maybe at that point in time, we were looking at more of a structure, but nonetheless, it's going to be, it's going to be really something.
Anything further from Parks and Properties?
Just wanted to reinforce what Mr. Faust has stated, the lights. So the tennis court lights, I think it looked like Georgia Power may have already changed out the heads. That was something that a couple of months ago, we moved forward and talked with the committee. There is no upfront calls to the city. It's going to stay probably more efficient billing on our electrical bill for Georgia Power. We do want to install two new security lights over there. So that's yet to be done. We want to put in monument signage. So we do have some leftover monies from the playground. We had secured the small kids playground from a local vendor. We did have some savings based upon what we have budgeted in the 2020 SFOs. So we're hopeful that we can get those monument signs there along with replacing the one of George Widdington that had gotten removed due to the worm main bus last fall. And I do want to comment that all of this under the leadership of our Public Works Director. So we do not have a parks program, but the street department, Public Works is doing it. And that's three positions short, meaning there's three open positions that I think we have asked for people to apply. So if you know of anyone who's looking to join the team, what we're doing, what Josh is doing is three less positions. So we feel very comfortable that although we've continued to have these positions budgeted, we just haven't had any viable candidates who want to join the team. We'd love to get some more folks on. It's going to continue to help our team, same way with some of the other positions. So just want to commend them for doing, you know, we haven't removed those positions. It's just no one's joining.
And the add-on about spending money locally. We, we've tried our best to spend our money locally, especially with the parks. The playground equipment is from, no, no need.
Not feasible.
Outdoor solutions. And they have done a wonderful job and they have been a really good partner to the city. And we want to thank them too for all their, their help.
Michael and Karen, be good.
Very good.
Great product, great service.
Before we leave Parks, can I make a few comments?
Yes.
As you mentioned, Keep Pickings Beautiful, I think it's important for, to remember that this year, well, last year, we started a new budgeting process for this year involving our key stakeholders. And we brought them in and let them participate in the budgeting process. And Keep Pickings Beautiful was one of those partners that we brought in. The Arts Council of Angela was brought in. The library, obviously, the chamber of commerce and our DDA. The meaning of that, we, we engaged them. We've supported, we've helped support those organizations and including Keep Pickings Beautiful for quite some time. And it was a little bit, a way of getting it a little bit more organized. And with a little bit more organization will come, I think, better long-term results. And so that process continues to bear fruit. So appreciate that.
It's a good sharing of information.
Right.
Before we move on to Parks and Properties, it's important, we heard the last few years that our parks needed attention, want the public to know, we, we urge you, we still hear you, we are consistently out in the parks, our crews are. As you mentioned, they're doing a great job. It's not overnight transformation, it's over time. And so, Councilman Faust, you mentioned it, it looks better today than it's looked for a long time. And we're going to continue that in all of our parks. Part of the list that we discussed today was actually being worked on today. I rode around, the crews were actually out at City Park doing bank stabilization, beautification along one of the waterways. So that's good. The KTB partnership has been enhanced. We continue to find ways to partner with them. They're good partners. We've had some rocky moments, but it's been good. So I appreciate the update from that committee.
And I saw the baseball field was very important partnership. So we are partnering with the community. We are involved with the community. We're not ignoring or it's not going on deaf ears. It's just to do it right, it takes time.
It does.
We, we made that commitment in our strategic planning meeting in August of 2023. So that was before any, all the turmoil hit over the elections about the parks when you folks were reelected. Kirk, if you don't mind, can I go just a little bit out? We talked about BRAG.
Sure. We're still on Parks and Properties, so that's a part of it.
I'd like to make some comments.
Sure. BRAG is going in a part.
So in our DDA meeting on Monday, BRAG was talked about. Amy from the Chamber came and spoke to us about that. And there was a, a lot of excitement about it. I did bring some questions that I had concerns about. First of all, I reiterated that how excited I was about the fact that they were coming back. I was the chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce when they came the first time. And I just wanted to make sure that, that I did not recall that our new policy of bringing things before this council for scheduling events had occurred for this event, even though I've been aware of the possibility of them coming since last August. As a matter of fact, I've been one of the drivers for it and communicating with Brandon and Kim and also both those organizations, meaning the DDA and the Chamber. Some of my information was misconstrued. And for that, if there was any misspeaking on my part, I sincerely apologize for that. That was not my intent. I'm a strong proponent. I'm a strong proponent of the Chamber of Commerce. I have, always have been. I frequently remind the public that the Chamber was one of our first organizations that we helped reorganize with a group of a bunch of people, many of them still involved in the most, the stuff that we're doing today. We did a nationwide search to get it, find Amberly, even though she lived right here. She was a, she was the type candidate and that's why she got that job. And even in the meeting on Monday night, I commended her for her results. And y'all heard me talk about hard borrowing things. In other words, you set something up and you get it to a point where you can walk away and it continued to run well. And she's done a phenomenal job. And Amy's done a phenomenal job on the Juris and Committee. And there has been some misconstruing of the information that makes it look like I meant something that I didn't mean. I just wanted to make sure that the DDA and my other organization understood that, that there's a process that we need to follow. And I appreciate the opportunity to say that.
And that policy and procedures to help celebrate, acknowledge and encourage. And so it's, it's a good policy. Thanks, sir. Enterprise Committee.
Kind of like, where do we start? Waste water plant. Looking to a May-June completion.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think we could all be excited about getting to that point. The dredging is completed and I think has been successfully completed and we should be happier about that.
So Brandon and I took a round, we, we rode around this afternoon and really a lot of different places. Some, some of them specifically related to my committees, but also some related to you guys. He showed me all the improvements over at the parks and some other things that we'll talk about as we get to them. We went to the, we went to this water and sewer treatment plant. And I, we drove in and I just, and I didn't, I didn't know really what he had up his sleeve, but he just called me and said, you, you up for a ride? And I said, yeah, let me throw my boots on. So it's kind of short order. And we rode over there and as we pulled around the curve, you remember the day we were always, well, we were last there as a group. And I'll tell you, that day I felt like crap physically, but, but as we turned the corner, I just said, it looks, it looks better around here. And it's deepened up quite a bit. And then we pulled around to the, to the, I can't remember what it's called, now the pond that when we were there at, you know, weeds and caddles, I was like, golly, there's, there's water. So it really does look a lot better than it did when we were there before. And I'm just glad to see that this is finally, you know, going to wind, wind down and, and get it moving ahead. Let's see. Sure, there's something else. I guess that's, that's the most of it.
And, and just to supplement, so next week, we do have a meeting with the, the committee and to talk about some of the Jifa projects next Tuesday and then I believe the following Wednesday, the 9th. So the next two weeks, we'll be meeting with Henry Horn and GMC. So the next two weeks, we'll be meeting with Henry Horn and GMC relative to the Jifa projects. So hopefully as we kind of continue moving to that track, hopefully by May or June, we'll be able to present to you all some items for consideration going to bid. We were called back in February, we'll be in Met to just kind of affirm these are the opportunities we have with our water sewer system. So we are continuing to make forward progress. I will tell you that it's it's nice to see some of these things come about, that when you do see the parks, oftentimes you don't necessarily see some of the subsurface stuff in your water lines, water lines. The EQ pond, you may recall, a couple of years ago, it was a challenge that may have been a million dollars estimated to remedy. Now, what Dr. Proctor witnessed today was not a million dollars worth, it was a partnership with Intermark, working with Charles, our director, to get it to a stable position in what it is now. So again, I'm not saying that this is the fix, it's the end all be all, but it's those type of partnerships that you all continue to look at to help with these elevated costs to do things. Additionally, something that we have just recently found out, Tyler Technologies is a program we use for our software. And I will tell you that one of the things that was alarming is they identified a challenge that the devices that the guys in the field have, these tablets, after 14 days, the service order falls off their tablet, meaning that when you get a service work order in, it falls off without anyone ever knowing. So the service orders we would have, customer service and the desktops, it would still show open. And so, once it's created, it's on the tablet. So oftentimes when there's this disconnect, they say, well, how can we uncover it? And you scratch your head and say, well, did it get completed? Did it fall off? Did a new one? And so we found out that now they've revealed this this challenge. But just to commend the guys that on top of just a normal, everyday work, we have four individuals that work on line maintenance. We've got three positions open, again, budgeted, unfield. We really enjoy anyone who wants to be part of the team, go application and join the team because that would greatly help. But we did complete thus far in March 32 service orders. So the involvement of going out to do a leak, a meter, a busting line, that's not the after hours, that's not the major bust on Cove or another water pressure issue like we had last night, that we're out in the best, just a normal operating of 32 that we have completed. So just wanted to, that's a little bit of information that was revealed today. So it wasn't something that we've been sitting on, it's just we learned it today. And so now we can kind of troubleshoot it and just continue to enhance our services to our customers. So beyond that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to get that in.
Thank you, sir. Development Safety Committee members are not present unless Mr. Hannah is listening. On the Development Safety Committee, I will say, we are focusing on both departments on training, training for all the team members, police department and fire department both. Fire department wise, Station 14, there is progress being made on the new fire station. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we are delivering on what we're doing with Flosk dollars.
We want to add to that, too.
Yes, Station 14 will be located off Liberty Lane. That'll be the new Jasper Fire Department Station. And the progress on it is impressive. Right now, it's just earth movement, but from there, I'm sure it'll take shape pretty quickly. And then the police department, they continue to protect our community, serve each and every day. They're doing a phenomenal job. I've seen them in action. And I believe Mr. Douglas, if I'm not mistaken, they have one position. And so if we know someone who's willing and ready to serve and protect our community, we do have one open spot. I'll skip on down to Development Infrastructure Committee. On this committee, if I can update you, this is new for all of you. I've not had a chance to brief anyone on this. Riding around today, I'm not sure if you made it to Elizabeth Street, spoke with Atlanta Gaslight while they were out there and they have made a solution, they've created a solution, I believe they're done after today. That gas line that was in that proximity, they have severed. The area that we need to construct in is now clear of them and we're good to go.
And to piggyback off that, that was part of the the hope. I always hate to set expectations because of weather and contractors and schedules, but we are hopeful that next week, weather permitting during spring break, that the contractor can get in and get out. So that was that was the desire. We hope that it works, it would end up being the following week, April 7th. But getting H E L mobilized to get them to do it, that does follow the schedule of hopefully next week. And a little bit at the first of the L-MIG, kind of stole some of the committee's thunder because those are kind of two stormwater projects, just wanted to kind of update them because I haven't had a chance to do that. And I don't know if they want to, you know, consult with y'all. I think I sent an email out about Wall Street this week, just to kind of initiate discussion. Not sure if the committee has any comments on the proposal for Wall Street.
I saw the drawings, I haven't really studied them. I would probably rather wait on those comments. I think we'd rather wait.
Yeah, I think it's going to take further discussion than it needs to be the full council. I think it's some interesting ideas, but we still need to discuss it as a council.
Some of the challenges I think are, as we kind of forge mid-round and we we have a set way of doing things and people may or may not understand that the basis of that is professionalism and they try to portray it as something else. But when we try to work with folks, I'm not being specific to this particular project, which is it's kind of intriguing and exciting project. If you if you if you tell somebody what they need to do and then they come back and tell you what they're going to do and those two aren't the same, people I think need to have a little bit better understanding that that's going to slow the process down. And again, I'm just making some generalities. And I think that has been part of the problem, but we did have some, I did see some drawings that were professionally done, but I still don't think anything official has been presented to to the department about that. Your comments?
And some of y'all probably have seen that there was some work that's going on in Spring Street, just outside the behind the Methodist Church. Again, just one of those, the department recognized that after a rain event, you and that road, believe it or not, is heavily traveled. You never just kind of sit and watch, it is heavily traveled. So oftentimes the crew would be out there early morning after rain, removing some of the gravel and trying to figure out, you know, the pull into the water. And there was a culvert that was completely covered up that they've uncovered. And then they've done some uncovered in the grates, kind of put a little burn behind the grates to help mitigate downstream flow to go into the grates, then go down to a pedestal that Josh and the team installed this week, they had on the yard. So would love to have more of those in inventory, but we just have to be selective with some of our purchases, but it looks fantastic. I think it really does. So
We may find out soon how effective it is.
Correct.
Based on the forecast.
Correct. So
There's been a little bit of interest and I don't want to speak too much on this because Anna's been one of the people that I've spoken to and also Mr. Hannah. Been a little bit of interest in our sign ordinances, even though I haven't really gotten a specific list of items or anything similar to that that we could focus on. Mr. Hannah's had some concerns on enforcement, I think, but I just want to remind Council, I sent out an email, but also the public, that we completely revised our sign ordinances. I was wrong, I thought it was 22 and I think we learned it was 21. That was a fairly extensive project where we engaged Clark Patterson and Lee and we formed with the committee and at that time, Mr. Douglas and Mayor Lawrence. And that was the first time, I think, we went through our building ordinances and our sign ordinances, went through everyone line by line. And there are complicating things when it gets to signs because it goes all the way to the Supreme Court and your Bill of Rights, freedom of speech. So you have to be very, very careful with what you do and how you do it. And so I think when we when we put that process together, it was combined with other processes that we put in place, like being able to only have one reading for an ordinance. So so we can change things that we want to change pretty quickly when we want to change them. Now, when you do, when you get into P N Z stuff, there very often is a public hearing process that you have to go through, so it takes a period of time. Of course, when we did those ordinances, they all went through that process. And then the last thing I'd like to say about that is the interest about the project, the Publix project, which of course, we're getting ready to have our open house, Chick-fil-A's moving forward. So far, there have been several variances that have come through concerning dumpsters and signage and they've all been passed by P N Z and we've got more to come, kind of winding down on that. Y'all probably know this, but I want to reiterate it. The reason that those projects have come to us the way they are is because of the way that property was is being developed. And it's not our choice how it was being developed, it's the property owner's choice. So Publix had a project, which was the other, the biggest, the big project. And they had outbuilding and they had stores associated with that project. And that was the, that's the magnet that gets up, gets in the other stores. So that one had to start the process and get going and things started happening. And then you get other interests, interested people. And each one of those projects is an individual project. So Chick-fil-A is an individual project, Modern Stalk is an individual project, Chipotle is an individual project. So each of those had to go through the individual process. And if they, they didn't have to have variances in their signs, they could have, and the sign ordinances haven't changed, they could have looked at our sign ordinance and made sure their signs did that, but that's not what they did. And they chose, and we gave them the opportunity to go through a variance process. And I think our staff should be committed because it's got to be frustrating for them to have all of these variances that they recommend that we deny. Because they're just following this very specifics of what ordinance says. But ultimately, when we did our charter, we're the deciding body. And it's not that we want to override what our staff suggests, it's just that we want to be fair and equitable as best we can. So that's why it's seemed a little bit disjointed when actually it's been tremendously organized. And it's amazing that we have been able to continue working through it. I know there's been frustrations on the developer side, frustrations on our side and even on council side when we, we got to go through this again, but we're almost there. And that, I hope that y'all can all attend the opening because I think, I think they're flying in from all over to see our little Jasper's store. If you hadn't driven through there now, the landscaping's all done, it really looks nice, it's exciting. All boats are rising with the tide, Eagles is completely rebuilding their store as a result, more than I could with this project. And so all of that is just bringing up the quality of life for our residents. And of course, the return to the community that organizations like Chick-fil-A do, Publix, owner, other employees on their stores, that's an opportunity that we're all very fortunate to have in our community. So, thank you, sir.
Not add-on about the ordinance and the variances, that's the way the system's designed so we can have flexibility. It gives us the ability to do what a lot of places can't do. So I think I think the system's working like it's supposed to. It might take a little bit of time, but it's there for a reason. And we talked about all the base stories, but even the small, anybody can ask for a variance and just let that be known.
Yes.
And this council listens. So that's just all we're asking, to be involved, be involved with the council and be involved with the city.
I think taking an informed and educated stance on something that's controversial with the knowledge of the past history of this community and what's has occurred here is something that we somehow got to get past.
Anything further on that committee, development infrastructure? Before we do adjourn, Mr. Douglas, I will mention a couple of things that we've discussed and be careful, this actually comes out of different committees, but one is a golf cart ordinance, expanding where that's feasible, noise ordinance, and then of course, our travel elected training budget, those have all shifted a little bit. And so to move forward, looking at some ordinance revisions or amendments, Mr. Douglas and staff will bring it to us accordingly when they have the time.
So I strap golf clubs on the back of my gear to make it legal, is that?
Probably so. Being no other committee, yes, sir.
One other thing, not on agenda, but before you ask for adjournment, surplus property auction, see as being stayed. When is it? And I have been accused of parking my truck over there, so it would be included.
I'm going to
He offered to auction off my truck, keep the letting.
April 5th.
5th.
April 5th.
Saturday, April 5th.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On-site location here.
I will not have my truck over there.
This this gate closest to the housing authority will be blocked. We're going to open that gate up and encourage folks to park there. They coordinated with Chat Tech to park there.
Park in the public parking at City Hall or Chat Tech if needed and walk through the gate on this side.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. All right, nothing further, Council? Give the full information for adjournment. First, can I say?
Okay.
On favor? Oh, sir, thank you, Council.